6:00 PM. Before we start the meeting, I would like to thank you, Travis, he's going to do the invocation, and I thank you for coming. I also would like to take a few minutes to thank all of the county employees at the road department, sanitation, EMA, the water department staff, and the sheriff's office deputies, and many more employees who have been out working long hours the past few days due to the winter weather. I know several of them have been out working to clear the brake from our roads, making sure our garbage is picked up on time, and of course, the deputies have helped as well as answering calls. I also would like to thank all the volunteer fire departments across the county for their assistance as well. I would like to pass along that I have gotten many phone calls, texts, and messages on Facebook from the citizens all over Coleman County who's praying for us, the safety of our county employees the past few days, and I also really want to pass that along in sincere appreciation to them for the long hours they have put in. Number one, Paul Toorder, and welcome this. Thank all y'all for coming. Two, Paul Rhodes, establish court invocation and pledge allegiance.
Chairman Clements.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Marchman.
Here.
I want to read you a quick verse out of Job 15. It says, "Now ye are clean through the word which I have spoken unto you. Abide in me and I in you as the branch; cannot bear fruit of itself except to abide in the vine. No more can ye except you abide in me." Goes on to say in the next verse, "For without me ye can do nothing." I appreciate the leadership in this room, and everybody in here is a leader in some capacity, and your sacrifices, and I want to encourage you that without abiding in the Lord, personally first, we can't be the leaders that God wants us to be. I want to challenge you to abide, spend some time in prayer, and execute your offices and your duties, and I thank God for that. I appreciate you and your service. Let's pray. Father, we love you. Thank you for your goodness today. Thank you for this commission. Each and every leader that's here, the sheriff and the others, we give you glory for good people doing good work on behalf of our county. We pray you bless the meeting, everything discussed, every decision. May it glorify God and better our community in Jesus' name. Amen.
Sheriff Matt Gentry, Denver, please.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Read approved comments of January 21 meeting, an emergency meeting in February 15, 2021. A proclamation extended to your personal actions, payroll requisitions, and approved all journal entries to be posted.
Make a motion with approval, item three.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. Number four, approve the comments or updates. Do we have any approved comments? We'll move on to new business. A, ratify C of Coleman Abatement for S.T. Hobens LLC by Coleman City Economic Development Agency in the amount of $1,165,000.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion with table that's under question. Mr. Chair.
I'll second that motion, sure will.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Table. B, ratify hopper machine and supply company to fabricate CD2 sail window screens with one coat of industrial enamel paint for the Coleman County Detention Center. Costs $20,120.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is a project that we started last year. As you know, our detention facility, the outside windows, which are connected to the sail blocks are plexiglass, so there is the ability for the inmates to break those, break them out with the possibilities of escape or to get contrabanded to the facility. So last year, we started this project of adding these screens that go over those windows that would prevent any safety issues with the detention facility.
Thank you so much.
Make a motion with approval, item B.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. C, recognition, county administrator Gary Tye Miller retiring after 23 years of service to the Coleman County Commission.
Yeah, 7:00 PM.
And I'm going to read the sentiment that's on the certificate. It's the same sentiment on all the certificates that we're going to present tonight, and it says, "Congratulations on your retirement. May the blessings of good health, the joy of good friends, a loving family, and the contentment of a job well done fill your life with happiness. Best wishes from all your colleagues and friends at Coleman County Commission." And Gary has served 23 years with Coleman County Commission.
God and fortune have a great staff that make my job a lot easier. I think they'll leave it in good hands for John if they don't do last one job. Thank you. Yeah, at the bottom of that, we're going to put a little keep yourself on week. On all things retirement. That's part of it, now, y'all know that. Right. Okay.
Officer Dean, recognition senior center manager Holly Pond, Linda Pruitt, retiring after 13 years of service.
Yeah, Linda's not here tonight. She, her husband recently passed, and she just, she just didn't fill up to it, so we'll make sure we get her recognition to her, but she's not here tonight.
Okay, B, recognition customer service representative Brenda Williamson retiring after 11 years of service.
And the sentiment is the same on Brenda's, and Brenda has had 11 years of service with Coleman County Commission, so.
Always been a big asset to the.
Yes, we appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed.
I'll make a motion with approval, item D.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion with approval, item E.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. L, resolution 2021-10 authorize filing of grant application for Recreation Trail Program RTP funds for Stony Laughtson OHV Park.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is a resolution to, for us at the economic development office to apply for a RTP grant of $2,500,000. We don't have the exact amount right now just because we're still getting some stuff from Doug and Tyler at the park, but that is an 80/20 match. And we anticipate the 20% match will all be in kind services that we'll do, so other than that, unless you have specific questions for any of us, I recommend we pass that.
Yeah, it's only, is it two or three? How many in this?
Oh, yes, it's a motorized, so this portion we're doing is the motorized part because of OHV Park being a, Stony Laughtson being a motorized park, and there's only, I think, like two or three of those in the state, so we would only be competing against two others, and from what I've heard is that none of those are going to be applying, so we would be the only one applying, so we understand a very good chance of getting that money. But of course, the grant, I forgot to mention this, is we're going to be replacing two bridges that they need to desperately repair those, but I think a couple of commissions already went down, I said that rehab, some trails they have, and some other maintenance issues that desperately needs to happen, and from a safety standpoint, that needs to be done.
Thank you, Red. I'll make a motion with approval, item L.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. G, resolution 2021-11 resurfacing project for County Road 1301.
Well, Mr. Chairman, this is a H-triple-lawn project. There's also some safety improvements that will be made at County Road 1301, and I do recommend the approval of this, approval of this resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion with approval, item Y.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. H, consider the surplus and authorize sale by best means possible of 17 vehicles from cars.
Joe, not here? I don't think Joyce is here, but this is just cleaning up some vehicles that needed to be surplus for a while, and we'll be able to surplus, to dispose of them by whatever means is best for those vehicles, and I recommend we move forward with it if the commission sees fit.
Joe overseeing that? Is Joe overseeing that?
The documentation came from Joyce.
Okay.
And we can work with Joe to dispose of these vehicles, yes, sir.
And ALDOT is already approved, that's correct.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion with approval, item H.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. I, consider the surplus of a 2007 Ford cutaway van from cars to be disposed of scrap.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is one that actually was already surplus and sold. The people never claimed it, and it's been several years, so at this point, the only option is to scrap it because there's no title.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion with approval, item I.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. J, consider payment of CARES Act funds received from the Department of Corrections to the sheriff's office for housing state inmates in the amount of $345,745.25.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, as you know, with COVID and everything that we've faced, there were a couple of options for some CARES Act money through the government. One of them was for the housing of state inmates. The Department of Corrections has been very slow on receiving state inmates from the county facilities, so we put in for a CARES Act reimbursement from March of 2020 to December 31st of 2020 in the amount of the $345,745.25 for the extra expense of housing approximately 80 inmates a day that were supposed to be at the Department of Corrections.
Make a motion with approval, item J.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. K, consider transfer of the Ford F-150 in the amount of $36,940, and the GNC Terrain in the amount of $19,206 from the Coleman County Sheriff's Office to the Coleman County Commission for consideration of $63,350.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, at the request, we had transferred two vehicles from the sheriff's office fleet to the commission for use with the agreement to replace those two vehicles for our fleet. We were able to purchase two trucks off the state bed, each one $31,675, for a total of $63,350 to put back in the fleet at the sheriff's office.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion with approval, item K, the picture that states that $63,350.
Yes, sir, Commissioner, $63,350. We've already paid for the vehicles and purchased them. This is just a reimbursement back to us.
Because it's showing 56 on that.
Yeah, it's still showing 56 on there.
I just want to make sure we get it.
Yeah, that was it. You'd take 56, I wouldn't.
Well, we happened to get it. Hey, I'll tell you what, I'll take 56 if you're out there. It only costs 20,000 out there, too. I say that motion.
Appreciate, sir.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. L, consider the lowest estimate for complete gutter and downspout projects using tradition gutters in the amount of $11,900.
Mr. Chairman.
You go ahead.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this was a project in addition to the roof project at the garage, the county garage, and we got three quotes, and this quote was the lowest, and it's, it's one that Commissioner Marchman has worked with in the past and recommended, so I recommend that we move forward with Traditions Gutter.
Make a motion with approval, item L.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. N, consider authorization to send out and place qualifications for architects and engineers to review county buildings and parks regarding ADA compliance.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just asking for authorization to send out qualifications for architects and engineers so that they can make, depending on how we get, recommendations for what changes may need to be made for buildings or parks that we have in the county, but all I'm asking for at this point is just to review qualifications of architects and engineers.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion with approval, item Y.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. N, consider request to have a prayer gathering on the front steps of the Coleman County Courthouse on February 20th, 2021 at 12:00 PM by Jesus and the World Ministry.
I'll make a motion with approval, item N.
Oh, are they? I'm sorry, I apologize. I didn't see you. I didn't see you. I was looking down, I did. You go ahead. Thank you for coming, sir.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I want to say, first of all, thank y'all for allowing me to be here tonight, but we want to do this prayer gathering just because I think we all know that with everything that's happened in 2020, everyone in our county has gone through a lot of difficult times. Prayer instills hope, and I think we look back on, you know, different revivals and things that have happened in different places, that prayer has been the foundation of that, so we want to take a step to kind of make a public stand to kind of reunify the church in, in doing a prayer for our county, the state, and our country, so.
I know 100%, I need it every day.
We all need it. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
I'm making a motion, yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. O, consider authorizations of Swamp John's field truck to use the south parking lot of the Coleman County Courthouse on February 20th, 2021, from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Who, who was that today? You remember?
I can't remember.
It was Coleman. City, it was Coleman City.
City, okay. Yeah, 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 I remember that. Okay, sorry about the, yeah. Make a motion with approval, item O.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. P, consider adjusting camping rates for all Coleman County parks.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, after reviewing six other local parks, you know, north and south of Coleman, we found out we were like $8 under everybody else, so we'd like to see an increase from $22 to $30 a day for our full-service RV hookups, and that'd still throw us under anywhere else, so the rates we, we done our survey was nearly $31 all the way up to $41.25, so we'll still be considerably under all the other competition levels.
And can you clarify one other thing? How long has?
Oh, sorry, it's been six years since we went up.
Six years.
At that time, we'd only went up $2, you know, per day on camping, so, you know, everything fuel, everything else has gone up, and we just want to keep the parks unified and, and put the money back into them.
Thank you, Doug.
Make a motion with approval, item P.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. Q, consider electronic filing of meeting minutes beginning February 18th, 2021.
Mr. Chairman, currently, we keep the minute meetings in large binders, and they're expensive, and we're quite frankly running out of room, and thank goodness with technology, we don't have to put forth that amount of money nor take up the space. So starting with the completion of this meeting, what we'll do is we'll have them online electronically, not only with the meeting minutes from here moving forward, as well as the documents that would accompany the minutes as well.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion with approval, item Q.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. R, consider refinancing 2015 and 2016 water sewer bonds.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is just to try to save some fines, save some money over the life of the bonds with current low rates, and this would just approve me to work with the underwriters and then bring back the package for your approval.
Make a motion with approval, item R.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. A, consider approval of funding for the additional cost per design and construction required to maintain the 100-foot runway pavement width at the Coleman Regional Airport as part of the runway reconstruction project. Estimated cost $647,000 to be split for the city of Coleman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is the runway project, our AIP grant for fiscal year 2021, moving forward and maintaining runway at the 100-foot width.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion with approval, item Y.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. T, consider approval of funding for replacement of the automated weather oper- authorization station at the Coleman Regional Airport.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this gives current weather on field that also supplies the municipal weather with our current location.
Make a motion with approval, item T.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. U, consider a proclamation to terminate local emergency.
Yes, sir, that is a termination of the local emergency conditions declaration that was done on Monday for the ice storm. The state declaration actually expires tomorrow afternoon.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion with approval, item U.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Passed. V, authorize John Bullard, county administrator, to work with Wesley Moore, city clerk, on financing options for the airport runway and automated weather authorization station project.
This would just be an addition to the projects you just approved to seek financing for the runway and the AWAS, as well as potentially for the hangar project, and then report back to you with, with the rates and the package that they put together.
Make a motion with approval, item B.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. W, authorize Phyllis Little, EMA director, to purchase a tent under ADPH grant, cost $17,100, 100% reimbursement covered by GSA contract.
Fine, yes, sir, this is a replacement tent for the current ones that we have for the state mortuary operations responding. Our current tents are inflatables. They have reached the end of their life, and quite frankly, in weather like this, they don't stay inflated. They kind of collapse on you. This shelter is a tagged on 20 by 20 by 6 and has a rigid frame with it, and the price is, total price is $17,134.73. It is 100% reimbursable under the ADPH grant that we have, and includes the insulation package and LID package.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion with approval.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. X, authorize the chairman and the county attorney to sign the federal FY 2021 certifications and assurance for FTA assistance program.
Mr. Chairman, Joyce McMeer, tonight, she had a previously scheduled appointment, but this is an annual certification assurance that everyone's following what they're supposed to be doing for the FTA and to receive the funds, so.
Make a motion with approval, item X.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. Y, authorize the commission to reappoint Linda Kegrick to the regional housing authority for a five-year term to expire in 2026.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion with approval, item Y.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. Z, authorize the county attorney Emily Johnson to negotiate to purchase price for commercial property associated with the grant application approved for resolution 2021-9.
Make a motion with approval, item C.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. Double A, approve the request for reimbursement of a washing machine to the Coleman County Detention Center, cost $12,450.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, the washing machine in the detention center had went out. As you know, we wash clothes 24/7, seven days a week. It never stops, and so we went ahead and purchased it, and we're just seeking reimbursement in the amount of $12,450 for the washing machine that we purchased.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion with approval, item Y.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Passed. B, B, bid number 1299, extension guard rail to Alabama guard rail.
So, Mr. Chairman, with all of these extensions hereafter, they've all came back, but then, within the pretty much the same inflation, there were no extraordinary cost increases on any of these extensions, I do recommend approval of these extensions.
I make a motion with approval, item B.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. C, C, bid number 1319, extension vitreous plant mix product only to good old contract.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion with approval, item C.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. D, D, bid number 1335 for lease of one or more current model backhoe to Warrior tractor.
Make a motion with approval, item double D.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. E, E, bid number 1338, award bid for lease of one or more excavators to the Warrior tractor.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion with approval, item E.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. F, F, bid number 1339, award for vitreous plant mix installed to good old contract.
Do we still have a contract with Whittaker? Are they, do we still have, can we still buy from them on the same, or is this, or?
Who's that? I'm sorry, who's that again?
Whittaker, or is it, is it?
Yeah, they're under the liquor service.
Oh, okay, okay, all right, all right. I knew there was an open contract there, I just couldn't remember. Yeah. I'm sorry, it was, yeah, F, double F. Make a motion with approval, item double F.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. G, G, bid number 1340, award bid for cement for full depth reclamation of national cement.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion with approval, item G.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. H, H, bid number 1341, award bid for hurt decides and adjustment, just adjustments to a lena chemical.
I make a motion with approval, item double H.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. Passed. I.I., bid number thirteen forty-two, award bid for polypropylene pipe to buy concrete products. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion with approval, I.I.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. Number six, the next commission work session will be Tuesday, March sixteen, twenty-twenty-one, four thirty P.M. Commission meeting run. Seven, the next commission meeting will be Tuesday, March sixteen, twenty-twenty-one, at six P.M. And commission meeting run. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion with adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion. Meeting adjourned.